So, good evening. This is a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We're opening the regular meeting. Our first application is Israel Englander on Sixth Smith Road nominee, Real Estate Trust for a final coastal subdivision at Sixth Smith Road and 25 Pear Lane.
Good evening.
No, he wasn't at the briefing.
I know, but somebody was up.
Oh, so you heard how the briefing went? He wants me to ask you right away, I don't know why.
I'm up to date. You know, Andrew Malillo came back to our office and briefed me on that. And so let me just start for the record. My name's Richard Regan. I'm a registered engineer in the state of Connecticut and the state of New York. I've been working with Rocco Vitti Andrea since 1997 and previously worked with Redness and Mead before that. Tonight, I guess we're in front of you to review what I would call a lot line adjustment. I think you may call it a re-subdivision. There's two existing lots. I don't know how long they've been there. The status is one of the houses has been removed and the pool on that lot, which I think is Sixth Smith, Smith Road, has also been removed. I went to the site this afternoon. I did not see anything other than, you know, the demolition of the house and the demolition of the pool. The other house on 25 Pear Lane, there is also a demolition permit and pull for that. It is my understanding that that demolition might proceed. I think the shut offs have taken place and that demolition might proceed soon. I think the intention is to install service connections in the street because Smith Road has recently been, I think, had some street work, maybe a new water main put in it or whatever. And paving is anticipated in November. So, in a perfect world, it'd be nice to get the service connections in so you wouldn't be patching it in the spring. So, as I understand it, we filed two CAM, Admin CAM applications for each of the lots. And now we're here for, I think it's called a re-subdivision. So, that's what I understand where we're at. Maybe you can tell me where you guys are at.
Commissioners, Nick, do you want to open?
I think we're looking at twin houses on the two lots as the ultimate, the ultimate project here. What I'm finding is that there's a significant amount of manipulation of the grades to facilitate the two proposed houses. And I'll just start with the first question was there's a required easement for a reconfigured driveway from Smith Road to what looks like the back of the house. Same kind of configuration to the same house, this one off Pear, where it looks like the back of the house. Although it gets, it was very confusing to me because I'm looking at pools and what I would think would be the front of the house. And it almost seems to me, when I was looking at this initially, that it was kind of backwards. That the pools would be away from Smith Road in the back and the driveways would, in the orientation to of the houses, towards Smith Road and the driveways as such. Then I got deeper into looking at how the grading works and it seemed actually almost a situation that if the pools were in the back and you pushed the houses up the front and mirrored the houses over, you wouldn't have to do so much grading to make the sites work. I don't know if you can shed any light on that or if there was, what are the wishes of the property owner was to have this configuration? That's my first question. The second question is, are both lots have the same house, the same pool? Is that just for subdivision purposes or is that what the, is the actual intent is to have the same house on each one of the lots?
I'm afraid I have not been briefed on that, so I can't.
Okay, so.
Go back to the microphones.
Yeah.
Should I?
So.
Yes, please.
So, if you haven't been briefed very much, what might be helpful to you is for us to go back over all of what we discussed this afternoon and maybe give you a to-do list.
Okay.
So, we, what is before us is, as you said, is written as a subdivision. It's actually, and there are two site plans that, as you also said, are being handled administratively. But because we're looking at the subdivision, we take a look at those site plans. So, the first thing that happens for us is we were then concerned about the site plans. And the only reason they're administrative is because we've delegated that authority to staff and it was deemed that it would not need to come to us. But as we looked at them, Mr. McRae just gave you some questions. There's a very long set of comments from the Conservation Department on the development of the lot that gave us pause as we try to be more environmentally sensitive. In addition, as the development plan is proposed, you currently don't meet the regulations with your patios. And if we approve these changes, the patios don't meet the setback requirements. So, you would need to go and get a variance or you would need to change the patios.
Plus the pool.
But, right, but, but no, it's actually the pool, it's actually the patio itself from.
The pool couldn't be in the front yard.
No.
And it has to be in the major setback.
Anything that meets the primary structures in the zone can be located anywhere. It's once it goes beyond the rear, it can make use of the accessory setbacks.
So, ignore that side comment of ours, we were just being real technical. You needed to set, you don't meet the setbacks. The other thing is that you took a whole bunch of trees down before you started. It was okay that you did some demolition. It wasn't okay that you took the trees down. So now we're wondering what happened to the trees, when you're going to replace them, how many you're going to put in? Because you're not supposed to start taking trees down until you have an approved site plan. So, an approved subdivision. Now, what we're going to ask you to do is because we got so concerned about this, is we'd like to give you all these questions, but then we're going to pull the two site plans up to us, which is within our authority to do. And we're going to have you come back, if you would be so kind, and talk to us about the site plans as well as whether you fully conform with the regulations on the lot line revision. But it kind of opened a whole, your lot line change opened a bunch of questions for us just because it was before us. The zoning enforcement officer and the Conservation Department are the ones with the greatest concerns. And they can, you can be given those, I think staff has probably already given them to you. If you address those and you do a landscaping plan and you tell us the trees you're going to replace. But something that the Conservation Department raises and that Mr. McRae just mentioned is you are re-grading a whole lot more of the property than would be necessary if it was laid out differently. Now, that is your prerogative, but it is not, we are looking for something more environmentally in tune than what is being proposed. We would like to see that if possible. However, you have flexibility as long as you're meeting the regulations, which haven't caught up to what we'd really like to see happening in coastal sites. So I think that wraps it up. Did I get everything, you guys?
Do you want to get any specifics?
It's a subdivision, right?
Yes, it's a, no, it's not a subdivision. It's a lot line. It's really a lot line. It's just a lot line revision. It doesn't rise to subdivision. But they have two, they have two site plans that are administrative right now. And what we're going to do is pull those up to us.
Right, but they're trying to do a lot line revision.
Yes.
Which they now have a road that is going across the property. And there's no set aside.
So, one of the things, well, they don't need to do another, an open space because they're only revising a lot line between two. They're not doing a re-subdivision. But the easement on that road hasn't been done either and that's in the engineering comments. But engineering said that they could come back with permit on that, on those. They wanted drainage easement and they wanted a, there's a road easement that they have to do.
Driveway easement.
Driveway easement that they have to do. And engineering came back and said that was okay to wait? I could go do it at permit?
That's more of a administrative thing where we need the proper legal documentation for it. Not, it's not necessarily something related to the design itself.
So, it's the two easements on the driveway and the drainage. And so that's it. Those are the issues. We can give you copies of the reports now?
Um, yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to give you mine because.
No, I have the, I have the plans. I'm all speed on that.
I think we can't get you onto our next meeting, but we could get you onto the following one.
That would be pending provisions submitted.
Right.
Could I just make one comment? So, a couple of comments. I guess what I'd like to say is I think this is what our client intends to do. Like, I have had issues where people say, "Well, the front yard is where the front door is facing." And, you know, obviously, everybody knows it's depending upon the layout of the lot. So I think, you know, that what they're proposing to do is have an access in off of Pear Lane, which I think exists basically now. So it's sort of essentially the same as what they're doing. They're just making this lot bigger because like, for whatever reason, I don't know. As far as, you know, we'll have, we're proposing a driveway easement.
Right.
For this, that driveway will take up some of the coverage on this particular lot, which we'll compute. And I think this is what was, you know, thought out and this is the intention of our client. Now, maybe we have too much grading or disturbance and we can go back and revisit that.
That would be really good if you went back and looked at all the conservation comments.
Yeah.
You're disturbing 95% of the lot. That's a pretty good number. And again, we would like to see something more environmentally sensitive. As long as you comply with the regulations, we can't hold you over a barrel on that, but we would really like to see it. But there are issues here where you're not complying with regulations and where you at least need to respond to the comments that the conservation staff has raised about your approach. And then you have this question of the tree removal where you really do have to tell us what you're going to do about the trees because you took them down when you weren't supposed to.
I'd love to comment about that. Thank you for bringing that back up. We're going to do an extensive planting plan.
You know how we are, we're from Missouri, we got to see it.
So we'll, we'll get you a planting plan that addresses that. And there was activity with the legal DEMO permits, but, you know, maybe something, whatever. So, we're going to get.
With a demolition doesn't, the fact that you have a demolition permit for the sewer does not give you the right to clear cut the lot. Maybe that wasn't clear, that the trees don't get to come down. And I believe that people told you, but I know what happens. You want to move forward and it kind of sometimes goes in one ear out the other. But we'd really would like to see a landscaping plan, what you're going to do, address conservation. Maybe you can get the easements done while you're at it. You absolutely have to address the zoning enforcement officers' comments because those, those comments are where you're not in compliance with the regulations. Since this is the development plan you're proposing, you would need to either get a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals or you would need to change this.
We'll take care of that. We're not going, I don't think we really want to go to zoning.
So, well, if you fix everything and staff is happy to help you.
Yeah. You know, basically, I'm just a pinch hitter here. Tony's going to step back, be back and he'll take care of this.
Well, you know, we're happy to have a pinch hitter, no problem.
So, just I wanted to clear, so we're going to final site plan review for those admin CAMs.
We're going to take those, sorry.
Yes, you could do final.
We're going to take those CAMs you have with us and we'll bring them up with this to the commission level and we'll review them all together and the commission.
And so it'll be final.
And what we'd like to do, Mr. Regan, is, yeah, I think you could come in final. I don't think you need to come in preliminary.
Yeah, we want to do final, yeah.
Yeah, they don't have to be preliminary. I think you could fix all the issues so that you don't have to make it even more complicated for yourself.
Yeah.
Well, and I think Nick's point was, I can't believe in this neighborhood you're building two houses exactly alike.
Let's see, straight almost.
That.
I, I mean.
It's what he wants to do and they're his houses.
Well, I don't, we don't like bait and switch.
I, 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 I understand that. I don't know, I can't answer that.
I'm just saying.
I think they want to do this exactly, but I don't know the answer to that. I know what you mean. It's a placeholder. Is it a placeholder? I can't give you that answer.
Well.
We're saying, if we review the site, it better be on the building that you have together.
Understood, understood.
Because based on prior performance, if it isn't exactly like you submitted, we might make you come all the way back.
Yep, understood.
So, we don't.
I can't, yeah. I don't think it's a placeholder, but we'll find that out.
It actually has to be. Exactly. Don't, don't decide on it, it's got to be this.
Right.
Our review, even at administrative level, would be approving that plan. So, any revisions to that, if they're significant, would have to be reevaluated as a new application. Actually, the pending CAMs that you have now are this layout. Yes, I can confirm.
I'm just making sure that it's.
Understood, yeah.
That we don't want to all of a sudden have a different house that you're proposing.
Understood. Yep. Okay, I'm good.
You got your home.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, do I have any comments? So, we're going to leave this application open for the next meeting, or, you know, for a subsequent meeting. You'll probably be on the 14th of November. So if you can get your changes done before that. Our next application is, a public, public meeting now opens. I was going to remember, I think.
I'm never this close.
I'm more past the 7:15.
81, yeah, I knew, I knew we were going to be happy. 81 Bible Street LLC for a final site plan and special permit at 81 Bible Street. Good evening, Mr. Hagney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members. This is a R6 lot on the east side of Bible Street. Tom Hagney. Oh, sorry. I'm thinking this is not a public hearing, but it is a public hearing.
And I even remembered to say it, thanks to Pat.
But, but for the fact that we're 29 square feet short, this would be done on administrative basis under the regulations that we now have for the R6 zone. It's removing the existing building, garage, patio, pool, and replacing it with a two-family house on the lot. We met with Mr. Marucci last week. He went over some suggestions he had in terms of revising the drainage. We made those revisions and you got a revised comment from Mr. Marucci indicating that as long as we were not tapping into the town storm drain system, that the plan would be handled as a exemption rather than as something for him to review. We did revise those plans so that we're not tying into the storm drain system.
Okay.
And providing detention and water treatment on-site. There were no issues with the sewer department that needed to be resolved at this stage. We've had the sewer line reviewed.
You gave the FAR plans to the CEO.
We did. And we hadn't given them to him in quarter scale. I did provide them to him in quarter scale last Thursday along with a, an additional worksheet on the, on the setbacks along Bible Street. Regulation was recently revised to allow for averaging in the R6 zone for existing building setbacks. And we did that, I did submit a letter to staff and to Mr. Kuchar on this indicating that we did comply even including the two other houses at either end of this particular block on, on Bible Street. We also received comments from the Conservation Commission, which were, for the most part, very complimentary and asking whether there should be different shrubs and hedge.
And you're going to do that, right?
We will, my client is a principal in CC Brothers. He's one of the CC Brothers. And they're perfectly capable of coming up with some very detailed plans. And we'll review that with staff as part of moving forward.
We went back and forth this afternoon between the briefing and now with the tree warden regarding the comment that Conservation makes about the street tree.
He didn't answer.
And, well, I went back with her again, yeah. They weren't particularly of help because nobody wants to say that we pretty much don't like having to do under canopy, the little trees. Our take is pretty much that if you plant a nice big tree, it's going to last a long time. But it depends on where it really, it's not, as long as it doesn't bump into the wires.
There are very heavy wires, 15 feet off the ground.
Okay, so you're stuck.
Right in front of this house.
I meant to drive by it this, did you get by it finally? You were going to try and drive by, no, okay. So, I know the street really well and, oh, there we go, okay. So, it looks like we're a little stuck for getting a good tree in there then. I was kind of hoping we could get something that was more sizable.
Well, you know, I spoke to my client about it and the trees that the Conservation Commission is suggesting are something that he was thinking of. We'll work with them on that.
I just don't.
You know, the issue is, you have all these wires and you have the trees growing in to the wires and you end up with these V-shaped trees that really aren't very attractive in their own.
The red buds, the red buds really don't do it for me as street trees. You know, they look so spindly, but.
I know the tree warden has been working with the utility in terms of trying to come up with something that works for them and that looks more attractive.
And you'll be glad to know that after the POCD is finally done, we're going to do a whole plan for the town on this.
I am glad to hear that.
So, and we're going to have a street tree plan, finally.
Excellent.
Okay, so that leaves you with no open items?
No.
Anything, anybody?
I have to talk about the building.
You want to talk, oh, you guys wanted to talk about the building, so there are open items. Gentlemen.
Well, of course, it's a two-family house. Our regulations talk about architectural review for three or more units. Just thought I prefaced that.
It's not going to ARC.
No, I realize that.
U.S. is a different kind of purgatory.
Mr. Hagney, I think I see. I'll wait for Mr. McRae's comments then.
It's more of observations that I've had about the plan here and what, I think, what the applicant is trying to do. And having you to go to ARC.
You get them instead.
What I found kind of interesting is that the lot is kind of this canted rectangle. And I know that the front facade basically was trying to create some relief. You have a, kind of a center, you have the two gable ends, the two garages, that kind of thing. If you could just bring up that front facade, yeah, that's perfect. What I thought was actually could be an interesting idea is actually take the symmetry that you have and move the north half of the building back and the south half of the building forward. Because I think your lot actually will allow that. And instead of gable ends, you could actually make just, just a flat facade. And instead of those gables ends that are applied there, just, you know, dormers on the roof itself. I think you'll get an offset of the two rectangles of the building, the two masses of each unit in the center. Give it a little bit of separation visually without trying to imply with all the corner boards. And then make it, probably have a better street appeal without the implied big gable in there and actually just the dormers.
Just looking at the other elevations.
You're symmetrical all the way around.
Yep.
It's basically just taking your party wall, north side goes back, you know, a foot in, south side comes forward a foot, if you would, whatever, whatever works out in terms of your setback still. Because right now you only have, you only have a few inches between the front, the door facade and the garage facade. And I think if that was completely flat and you made the separation in the middle, you'd get a better solution to the same things that you're trying to do.
Yeah, as, when we were first doing the average setback, we were just taking the, the lots on either side. When we took the whole block, it added a little bit more to the setback. We still comply, but it gives us less tolerance to work in. And we're showing our rear setback is 27.2. Yeah, there is probably a foot or two there to play with. Is your suggestion that we take the north one and move it back slightly?
Yes, north to the east and south to the west. That way, instead of having that, that.
Because this is our closest corner to the street.
Right, right. And so you actually have, in the south, you have a little bit more wiggle room to push it towards the street. That way you can eliminate that, that little bump right there at the garage. Make that a flat facade and make your, your offset right there in the middle.
So we're bringing this a foot or so forward, this a foot or so back.
Right.
So that you get one has a bit of a depth.
You don't have that big.
Yeah, we're not talking six feet or something. We're talking a foot or two total.
I'm saying if you, if the north goes back and hits the setback and the south goes forward to hit the setback, whatever that distance is with the, between the, you know, east to west, that could be your, your offset.
Yeah, the only concern I would have is just the circulation in, in the parking area itself. You know, if we, if we brought this a foot forward and brought this a couple of feet back, as you say, because of how the, the lot is shaped, we have more room there.
Yes.
The northern unit. I'm concerned about just crowding that too much and trying to have it too close to the street.
You have the covered porch and then you have a little bit of walk. It seemed to me that's, that's the place that you're looking for, you know, to push it out.
These are suggestions, because as you pointed out, Mr. Hagney, this is a two-family house. It would be handled administratively. This would never go before ARC. And you are not required to. Mr. McRae is thinking you would have a better result with his, with this input, but that is your decision.
Sometimes there are suggestions.
That are good and helpful and that's his intent here.
An improvement to the plan.
Yep, and that's what his.
And certainly, my client wants to have.
His intent is to give you a better result, so.
Split here.
Okay.
My 20 minutes is in it.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I thought the whole 20 minutes was the first two applications and that, then you were going to call it quits.
No, I promised the chair one of them that I would spend 20 minutes talking about architecture.
Purgatory would only be 20 minutes. I was, I extracted that promise.
I made out such promises.
Oh, no.
But I think understanding your. But I think understanding you're, you literally have two boxes, and I think actually just taking the two boxes and shifting them.
Rather than having one big box, we should have two smaller boxes that are offset.
That slide past each other, yes. Right.
That certainly seems to make a lot of sense.
I think actually, once that's done, you could actually eliminate the jog in the front near the garage. You could actually probably lose the gable on, you know, those, those gables that are applied. It's really not even headroom in the attic, and maybe put in some dormers that'll actually add light inside to the attic.
Yeah, we do have headroom in the attic, and there is usable space.
Yeah. The dormer might be able to add some, some light to that.
I don't wanna play architect on this. I certainly see your point of having the one forward and one back, which makes a lot of sense. I'm not sure I wanna go any farther with the actual design of it, other than, than that, than that change.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Is that all you guys? No?
I just wanted to make some comments. I think that the drawings I have are not very detailed, so I don't know how pertinent they are, but the, the windows themselves don't, they seem to be
Yes.
At a scale that isn't very flattering. There are these square-ish windows above the entrance on the second floor. They seem to be a little bit underscaled, and the square windows above the garages are not that flattering from a design perspective, so I think you could articulate them just a little bit nicer than they have been.
So, that's the only thing.
And the, but it's very hard to tell from these drawings because they're just not, you know, there's just not much detail to them, so I'm just giving you a feeling, I just wanted to let you know that the geometry that you're showing here is a little too The four-two to fit in nicely with the rest of the street, that there's not a lot of design intention on a lot of this buildings along the street, and this has not opportunity to do something a little bit more special. And windows and doors are a great place to start. The roof line is another place where you can improve it a little bit. Those dormers are little squat and not very ambitious. They certainly could be higher and have a little bit more character. Is this clavard?
Yes, it's gonna be, it'll be hardy plank that's clavard.
Okay, well, the way that it's, the way that it's drawn is not representative much of anything. One of the things that create a lot of character when you're using these traditional colonial motifs and materials is how you treat corners, how you treat windows, so that the field in this case, which is the clavard, is a, is a nice canvas for these other things that are a little bit more special in it, because there's nothing special about a blank canvas. You wanna put something on it that has some interest to it. So, I think that just more you could do very simple things.
Actually, I think I've got, just, just some quick thoughts, really fast, to just kind of pin down what you're saying. If you go with the gable end, instead of vertical siding there, continue the clavard. That way, you're not adding a separate material. The doors and the porticos for the front doors, if you go with the, those gable ends, make sure that all aligns as a center. Right now, the door is off by a few inches, and then I think, you know, what you're saying is that the windows are a little disjointed. It's almost as if the, the size of the upper sashes of the double-hung windows, either one, they're the same size as the square windows above the doors, or the square windows the same size as the upper sash of the double-hung. Okay? Because I think that'll actually kind of tie that all together. And like he said, corner boards, you've got them. I think actually if the corner boards came down to a more defined water table along the bottom edge there, that would really kind of pin it to the ground. And I think actually a little bit of thought into the garage doors where, because these are a significant element on the front facade, if they had more of a gate feel or a door feel, as opposed to just an overhead, that kind of thing might, might help out a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Does it cover it?
Good, good, good.
Okay. Okay, do I have any comments from the public? No. All right. It seems that, oh, and I guess before we do anything else, Mr. Hagney, this, just for the record, we do note that you are before this because this lot is undersized for the two, for the zone, for the two-family house, and that's why you are before us with this item. And we, we find, at least I believe that the basis of the comments that you've heard is that we do not have an issue with the size of the property relative to what you're proposing to put on it. So, with that, should we close this? Okay, so we'll close this application then. Thank you. So, the business, so. Don't actually have the authority to give regulatory guidance on this architecture. He was okay with it, but that's why he was pushing. Mr. Hagney, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, man.
On behalf of both of us, yes. I don't know why I keep doing that. Okay, so.
You think John's younger than you, actually.
The Battle Hill Corporation for a final site plan and special permit at sixty-two Mason Street. I don't know, and you know, Mr. Tessie, I do it to you and not to him. That's the other thing.
I don't know.
I don't know what it is, and I never did it in all these years till now.
He's trying to make me younger than I am, which I really appreciate.
Okay, so, Mr. Tessie.
Yeah, just have one, one protest comment to make.
Yes.
You promised me I wouldn't be last tonight, the last meeting. So, I had to wait till seven forty?
Yeah. It's terrible. Does that mean you're buying?
Yeah, sure. Yes, sorry. John Tessie for the record, not Tom Hagney.
All right, Mr. Tessie, do you wanna pick up where we left off two weeks ago?
Yeah, I will, quickly, from what I can cover, and then we have Wesley Stout here and also Steve Muller, the usual suspects. Mr. DeAndrea, as you may have heard earlier, is not here this evening. He's away. So, from a site plan standpoint, and as shown on our landscape plan, the, the site plan has been revised by shifting the driveway into the property a bit to the north. This is basically hot off the presses from Mr. DeAndrea's office. I do have, although it's tough to read, I do have some reductions. Maybe we can just pass it down. I will just note that maybe easier to look at the landscape plan. With that, because that's about it for the landscape planning, except just to note with regard to street parking, we are delineating two replacement spaces, or shifted spaces for the property, one to the south, has been there, which was there originally, and then, as you know, at the last meeting, we had a different configuration, so it was gone. But we now have reinstalled the parking space to the south and keeping also a parking space to the north, which was at least alluded to in the last D P W comments from, from the previous meeting as to not having, as the D P W Traffic Division, if you will, not having an objection. Mr. Orlando has, my client, who's also here, as you may have been able to see him or not, sitting in the back, has had a number of discussions with the parking director, and basically his point has been so long as engineer, engineering is happy, he's happy. So, I know it's a bit of a circle because the engineering department's saying if the parking director is happy, they're happy, but I think they're happy.
We did this with the tree warden earlier today.
Well, speaking of trees, tree warden, maybe I will now hand it off to our landscape architect, unless there are any specific questions, and then followed by Mr. Muir. Is that okay?
Yes. I'm looking over at the landscape plan, sorry.
Trying to move it along, that's all. Pat, I have a full size of that that I'll give you of the revised site plan.
Good evening. For the record, Wes Stout, landscape architect, planner from New Canaan. I'll be brief, but it was explained that we've shifted the driveway. As shown here in the plan, we've adjusted the front entry walk because of that, and so it used to be more pulled out. It's actually recessed, probably more comfortable from the streetscape perspective as well. Steve has a really nice rendering showing how this looks from architectural perspective, which is great. Save the magnolia, save the red maple, and we're putting in a, we've, it's actually in the plan list, committed a four-to-five inch caliper sycamore to replace. That's a good-sized tree.
Okay. All right. And just to recap from two weeks ago, we had talked to the tree warden, and we have this before us now because the tree warden actually preferred to save the red maple and the magnolia versus the sycamore, and so you've shifted the driveway so you can do that, and I'm sure you're gonna take care of this as well, but you've got a lot of people who are gonna be driving by making sure that that magnolia has adequate protection for it.
It's, I mean, I provided Mr. DeAndrea a grading. This is all existing grade under the tree, so that's the good news, we're, we're not having to do any cuts or fills right, you know, near the tree. And then the utilities are gonna be shifted to come in here. They used to come through here, through the magnolia, so we've, you know, we've coordinated with them to get, you know, protect that baby. And I think by, you know, even though we were looked into moving it, I think moving it would probably cause more stress to it than anything else. So, I think as it's landed in that elevation, that location, I think we're in good shape.
When you do that new sycamore, will you do that Silva cell technology type of?
We used, we tend to use an engineered fill versus, yeah, there's a, there's a soil that is constituted for, correct.
It'll manage the roots down.
It's an urban tree soil, yes.
And that'll force the roots to go down?
Helps them to go down and lets them get air when they start to, you know, as, rather than just have a little pocket of topsoil around it, which is the way a typical tree, you've got a prepared soil area, which is this whole area.
Okay.
And so, that tree immediately has the ability to get water and move in a greater dimension.
And it won't break the sidewalk?
It, it definitely helps because that's where it wants to go for air and water.
Because I thought that was the advantage of the Silva cell.
Silva cell is a little too complex for a lot of situations. This is actually in the town right-of-way. I'm not sure if the town engineer would actually want it or not, but the, you know, engineered soils are a great way to do it.
I believe we have some installed in Greenwich Ave, but.
I believe there are somewhere, like it's all concrete around it. That's not what this is doing.
I mean, I'm just thinking that the sycamores in my neighborhood break the sidewalk really badly, so I don't want someone to come down the pike in another twenty years when your tree is beautiful finally and say, well, look at what it did to the sidewalk, so that's why we're, if it's viable, if you can get those roots to behave.
The engineered soil, I think, is, is the right solution for this location.
I'm gonna hold you to that.
Okay. Happy to.
If we're both here in twenty years anyway. Okay. Okay, so, that's for the trees.
There was a question about a lift. Can I address that?
Right, your ADA access was problematic.
Right. I, I think collectively, we need to, as our team as well, maybe as yourselves, but I think we need to evaluate whether it really has to be accessible to the front door, so, but Steve and I discussed how that might be done, and what we.
I don't think it does.
Pardon?
I think the ADA parking space is in the garage.
It complies.
The garage elevator provides your ADA.
I'm of the same opinion, but, you know.
How did it come up, Pat, the whole thing with the ADA?
Came up the middle of last week with, from staff.
I think staff was reviewing the plans in preparation for this report, realized that it was a question that wasn't discussed, and so I believe that it was just asked as to whether or not it was considered, and that we've done the code analysis for egress and whatnot, so I'm not suggesting that we're asking for the lift. I think it was more of just, has that analysis been done so that we're not re-excavating the whole front yard or again, or whatever, you know, could happen.
Correct. And, and we, we're with Mr. Fox in our opinion collectively, but, you know, it should be grounded in science, obviously, but we wanted to be able to show you a way we could handle it if we had to, because we did take a little time and look at some different solutions. And the way to do it, we, we're already graded up to elevation eighteen at the front door, so we're good to the front door. It's just we need to get from eighteen to eleven, and if we were to do that with handicap ramps, that's seventy-two inches, seventy-two inches equals seventy-two feet plus landings, we're eighty-five to ninety feet of ramp.
Yeah, Mr. McRae was running that by us this afternoon, so we understood why you were.
We would end with, with like a triple switchback, sort of. So, we came up with the idea at the bottom of the stair and at the top of this, from the top of the stair, there would be a lift, and that would go down to elevation eleven plus or minus to get, and a new sidewalk here tied to this sidewalk and out. It's, I see some heads shaking.
Isn't it?
It's contrary to the ADA, I mean, it's.
It's garage to unit.
The space is in the garage. It's accessible from the garage elevator, and we're trying to keep the front more landscaped and less, less.
Mechanical, yeah, exactly, yeah.
I'm gonna go with your knowledge. Nick, do you have any comments on that?
I appreciate what Mr. Stout's actually saying about the lift. I actually, it's interesting, it's actually, you've got, I guess, two maples in the front implanted, twins to either side, plus a lot of landscaping, some walls that actually is really gonna kind of soften up that front, front door. I think for, how many times that lift may be, may be used in the course of a year, it's probably, if anything, suited inside, and I would suspect actually, once you get up to the front door, the front door is, I mean, six inches above the front entry anyway, so.
That we have covered. That's on grade, the way we handled it for height and clearances and everything, so. But, but you're right, I think it, it probably would be used more by a mechanical engineer fixing it twice a year than it would be by, by users.
Exactly, exactly, okay.
And if you ever had a resident who needed it, you could add it, right?
Yeah, it would come up through the garage.
Yeah, there's, there's access to each and every floor.
Okay. All right.
I will submit, somebody asked for full-size copies of that if you wish it, so there are copies of that plan there. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Steve. His new rendering reflects what we're showing here today, other than a tree that I see should be added, but looks good. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
So, the new sycamore, what's the largest ball size you feel comfortable putting in?
We could, we could get potentially a five to six. We've called for a four to five.
The ball, not the caliper, the-
That's the caliper, and-
The ball size, I think you said 60.
I'm more concerned about the ball size, so we-
I think you said, 60 inches is what's in there, right? 60 inches, I think, is what's in your right of-
That's right. 60 inches is, would be a five to six. And I had done all that research and confirmed all that, so, you know, that's right at the cusp. Could we do it? If you want us to do it, we'll do it.
I just think that-
I don't disagree, so, yeah.
You agree?
I agree that, yeah, bigger is certainly a better solution for this location. I always, I tend to say, rather than push to the max, max, sometimes I'll go one size off. That's why we proposed a four to five rather than a five to six.
Why don't you put a five in and not?
What's that?
Put a five in.
Yeah.
Don't put a range.
Right. Well, that's, I mean, they're sold, and the whole industry is set up with a range, because you can't predict it. It's not like a subway tile that's exactly four inches, so. But we'll work on that.
And then, the magnolia. How many years do you think it'll live with this driveway?
I think weather is more likely it's faux than the driveway. And I haven't looked, we've had two people look at it. I haven't discussed cabling yet, but I know it's, it's bulky, and when, particularly if you get like a snow event, when the leaves are on, it gets a lot of weight, and you've all seen the damage that can be caused, so. I'm, or a windstorm, I almost think the weather's more of an issue than the driveway. Yes, sir?
Excuse me. The impact in terms of stress of the configuration of the driveway, can you comment on that with regard to this tree?
You mean the construction in, within proximity of the magnolia?
Yes.
I think collectively, and again, we spoke with Mr. Dandrea about it as well, collectively, we're, you know, we're comfortable that it's got a very good chance of survival. It's got health issues with the hollow. That's why I'm of the mind that, you know, weather could more likely do it in than construction, if we handle that properly. It'll, you know, it'll have to be protected, obviously. We've already rerouted the utilities. I did the wall elevations, so that we didn't have to grade around that whole area. Gave that to Mr. Dandrea. So, you know, I think-
So the root structure would not be affected?
Marginally. You know, trees are, trees are, trees are funny. Magnolias are pretty tough trees, which, you know, it's like, if this was a sugar maple tree, I would say, this isn't going to work, right? If it was an oak tree, I'd say it stands a darn, darn good chance to survive.
One more than the one at the modern.
Yeah. And, you know, oaks are strong, and they, and it's also how you cut their, or treat the root system. If you, you know, if you cut two halves, you know, if you cut half of it off, it's one thing. If you nip an edge, it's going to, it's going to get some root regrowth and put out some new growth. So it's, I think it's got a very, I don't think construction's going to be the demise of this tree.
All right. What other comments do we have?
Can you turn your mic on?
What other comments do we have, commissioners?
I'd just like to address the changes to the architecture.
And you have your mic on?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Mr. Mueller, do you have a moment?
Hi, good evening. Stephen Mueller, Stephen Mueller Architects. So, last time, I think there was three architectural elements that we wanted to address, and one of the other components that we were able to modify in this rendering is to show, is this still on?
Yes.
Is to show, we've re-designated the driveway, as per the plan, and have made all of the retaining walls accurate to the proposed grades and elevations of the wall, so this is very representative of what's really happening. The other element was, you had asked a little bit about addressing the garage door. We've concluded at this particular point that the transparency of some kind of grade is probably the best at this point. That was one. The second was, we wanted to address this front element a little bit more clearly, and I have a rendering that shows that, and then also how the elevator and stair element that came out of the roof. So, I think that the elevation, rather than the perspective, starts to represent this element and the strength that we've been looking for here.
That's great and successful.
I really compliment you guys, just, you know, the input that we've gotten, and I think we've taken that and we've run with it, and I think that we've actually come up with a better design, so.
I appreciate what you're doing with the bulkhead for the elevator and the stair. The treatment out of the drawing that we have got, does that happen all the way around with the windows?
Yes, it does, yes. And it's not going to be brick, or I'll look at another element, I'm not really sure whether it's stucco, whether it's wood treatment, but yes, the whole idea was to just provide windows, the elevator shaft, they might be opaque, and the stairwell, we have glass everywhere, that would be a nice element to add.
Okay.
I actually have that just drawn here for everyone to see. I know I passed it out, but again, it's a little bit more sensitive.
Garage door, actually, I think we're on the same page in terms of the openness, but actually, staff brought something up today that was a kind of an interesting take, is that the garage is going to be lit, and that it might be a better solution to have a solid door.
You know, we actually did a 360 on that today, when we were, when we were meeting. It was not only the light, but it was the heat in the garage, which would be cold, would be drafty. So I think we've kind of regrouped with that a little bit, to say that probably solid or maybe some opaque glass, or some other element, other than the transparency of the grate, yes.
Understanding it's probably going to be an overhead door, automatic.
Yes.
That's the technical specification, I think, for aesthetics, if you're looking at something that's stained, or looks like it's stained, and more gate-like, would be, I think, more appropriate, and probably we'd be quite successful to create that solid look.
Yeah, I think that's correct, more like to simulate a garage doors that we're doing on all the residential.
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
Exactly. So, but I think actually, everything's working great. Thank you for the time and the effort.
Okay.
I think this could be a pretty good building when we're done.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Great.
I'm sorry. Sorry, the elevations, sorry, the renderings that you showed us there, does that show this whole street tree, or is that out of view?
You know, the landscaping isn't real here. We were just trying to, we were trying initially to do that, but we had a tree here that was blocking the front entry, so.
Sure.
We've just kind of tried to just show the architecture. It doesn't represent the landscape plan.
For the commission's benefit, could you point on the curb where that is about going to be? Is it going to be in this shot, if it was there?
This tree?
Yeah, the new tree.
I believe it's in this plant or right here.
There's one here.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And there's another one here.
Okay.
Holly. And then, were you asking about the sycamore tree?
Yes, that's the one.
I think that-
Yeah, it actually sits, it sits right here.
Right.
Perfect.
I think, yeah, this is probably even better.
I understand that you have to take it to show the house, the building, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to, if it was going to be in that location, I just wanted to make sure that we know where it sits.
Sort of straddle.
Just to the right of the front entry walk.
Of the walkway.
Correct.
The northern side of the walkway.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any further comment?
No, thanks very much.
Members of the public? Madam Messina.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Joanne Messina, Executive Director of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. Thank you all, and thank you for all your hard work, and specifically, all the work on this application. Couple of comments. Number one, I'm curious as to how the magnolia suddenly became healthy when it wasn't healthy the day after.
We had a session with the tree warden, and we discussed it at length, and-
Well, the tree warden never had a problem with the health. It was the applicant.
Right, and well, we just basically relate to the applicant, where we came out, having discussed it with the tree warden. And the bottom line was, what the tree warden said is that once a tree has split the way the magnolia has, no arborist is going to say it's going to live a long time, but in his experience, it, they're tough trees, and they will. And so based on that, we said to the applicant that we really wanted to take a chance that it would survive, and to try to protect it, and so the applicant has agreed to do that.
Thank you.
And then, the applicant had moved, was saving the sycamore, but on the discussion with the tree warden, he told us that he actually valued the maple more, the red maple, in terms of its age and importance, and so that if we were going to make a choice, he would want us to opt to save the maple now and replace the sycamore.
So, I understand that.
So we were kind of getting staff to help us get this to a solution that, that worked.
I hear that, I understand that. I have had discussions with the superintendent of Parks and Trees as well.
And I shouldn't have said, it was both Mr. Gaspadnoff and Mr. Kramer.
Dr. Kramer, yes.
Dr. Kramer.
Yep, yep. The superintendent of Parks and Trees and the town, the Greenwich Town Tree Warden. Yeah, we've, we've all had discussions, and I think that's wonderful. I think the Tree Conservancy feels a little differently, possibly, than, than staff, but I understand your, your discussion with the staff. I really appreciate your bringing up Silva cell. This is a place that it can be used, very definitely. It was, as Patrick said, used at the bottom of Greenwich Avenue, and if you look at those four trees, there's two that used it, two that didn't, and it's very obvious which ones are which. The exciting part of Silva cell is it can be done in very small spaces or very large spaces, because they're each cubes, and they go, and it's like a building block set. So, I thank you for bringing that up, and I really think it is, is a good place to do it. The discussion of the sycamore scares me a little bit. I think, as you know, the Greenwich Tree Conservancy has planted over 3,500 trees in the last 12 years on public lands, and we have concentrated on the downtown area specifically, and we are very cognizant of how street trees in the downtown area thrive or don't thrive. And part of the reason we do two-to-three-inch calipers is because they get accustomed to the area, they get accustomed to where they are, and we have had better survival rates.
So you would rather see a smaller-
Well, I don't want to say that.
Okay. You tell, no, but you tell us what you want.
Because I'm telling you what we've done for 12 years, and how we've been successful.
Okay, so you, I mean, tell us what we should do.
So, I'm thinking-
I thought you wanted bigger, and that's why I'm pushing for bigger.
That's why Andy went for bigger.
I'm thinking the four to five is worth a shot.
Okay.
So I am going with, with that, that, but I am saying to the, to the commission that this is something that we're very cognizant of, which is why we don't want the tree taken down. Right. And we still feel strongly that, that we don't want this tree to come down, and we were still hoping that there would be some outlet on the, on the backside, so that we would be able to protect all the trees.
So we explored that extensively with the engineer at the last meeting, and Mr. Fox was very helpful, as was Mr. Mackry, who had walked the site and looked at it, and what they both concluded was that the change of grade from the lot in the back into the garage made it very difficult to accommodate the parking, if they came in from the rear. The applicant didn't want to do it because of the license, but they felt like the logistics of how, what that does to the ramp, the down ramp, and I don't know anything about that, I'm trusting these guys that they're right. I kept saying, I don't understand why we can't just, you know, but, so that's why we ended up without the entrance from the rear. I was very disappointed, but apparently, to give the driveway a pitch, do you want to explain this?
Yes. You've basically got a 30-foot ramp, and you can't get parking?
So that was the issue. So we had to make that trade-off. I'm not happy about it either, but at least we got the tree back.
Right. And I appreciate that. So we have two out of three.
Yeah.
But they're both, the two trees are both the private trees, correct?
No, the maple's a street tree.
The maple is a street tree. Okay. Great.
So we saved one street tree, and as I mentioned earlier this evening, and you may have heard me say this to Mr. Tessie, once we get the POCD approved, we're going to do a number of very short-term, small task forces that are going to come up with recommendations on specific topics that need some drill down. We don't think of them as lasting a long time. Small group of people gets the plan done, and then we'll take it out and validate it with the bigger public, and that the first, in the first group, we want to do a townwide planting plan. It would include downtown, the Post Road, and the villages, at the very least, to really work on, let's get on the same page, so what, DPW, then the tree warden, Tree Conservancy, everybody knows, and private developers, everybody's on the same page. On the Post Road, we want to talk to the car dealers about it, because they're such a big component of the western side of town on the Post Road, and so we'll involve them at some point. I reached out to you, to tell you that we were hoping to connect you with the, the guy who's going to chair that first task force, and he's a landscape architect who's on the ARC. And there are two landscape architects on the ARC, and they're both going to be on that.
Excellent.
And we've secured them, somebody from the Tree Conservancy, the tree warden, and, I'm forgetting. There's six people. I just went blank.
Don't worry about it.
But there you go.
We'll get to it.
So, that's the plan. This kind of thing then won't come up in the future, because we'll all know that if a sycamore goes, a sycamore gets replaced.
Excellent. And that also reminds me of the last thing, which is, yes, having trees on the plans is really wonderful, which hasn't happened in the past years.
And it'll be to look at carbon dioxide absorption, to look at what survives the street trees, but this will all be what you guys are going to do.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a question of Mrs. Messina?
Oh, conservation, yeah, go ahead.
Is there, in your experience with planting trees in downtown, is there a specific issue that you see with the engineered soil versus the Silva cell? Is there, is there a, is there a reason why you're recommending the Silva cell, I guess, is what I want to know?
Honestly, we've only tried it in the one time, and we saw the two. We have seen where the engineering soil has not worked.
Okay, so you've, you've experienced that, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted your experience.
But, quite honestly, because we've planted all public trees, it's usually the town specifications per se, so there hasn't been a whole lot of, you know, trial and error on that.
Okay.
But the, and let me say, the Silva cell is a type of technology. DPW uses a different one that has the same idea, and that's fine also. It's the idea of having a structure so that the sidewalk, or the drive, or whatever, will not compress the roots.
Right.
Whereas, whatever soil you're going to use, there's going to be compression, and may in fact be roots coming up through the sidewalk. But we're not, yes, we happen to research Silva cell, but not what it just does.
Well, you mentioned about all the tree planting you have done in the downtown, so I just wanted to tap your experience on that.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I mean, the town highway division will have a lot of say about how that gets constructed.
Well, our biggest problem is with DPW entry, entries, so.
So, but DPW's still be on the task force, right on?
Sorry. DPW, Parks and Rec, which would be the tree warden, you guys, two landscape- Sorry. DPW, Parks and Rec, which would be the tree warden, you guys, two landscape architects...
Well, you're saying tree warden, but you're meaning the superintendent of Parks and Trees.
I mean, I mean, Dr. Kramer.
Okay, because he's not yet the tree warden.
Yeah, I mean, Dr. Kramer. DPW, conservation, tree conservancy, two landscape architects. And we may also give you guys a facilitator who then will go do a graphic identity task force after, so that we're going to do a planting plan and then we're going to do a signage and graphic identity plan for the town that fits with it. We're going to put the, one of the people from the first task force, we're going to put him on the first task force so he can follow through to the second one, know what everybody was thinking about planting, and begin to think about signage and how we redo the sign regulations.
Excellent.
We hope.
Excellent.
It's a dream.
It's a wonderful dream.
But you've got to live in the world of the possible.
That's right. And we are very, very willing to help in any way we can.
Well, believe me, you're going to...
I'll be there.
Think about who you guys want on it.
No, we just want a consistent voice. As we found with this application, we're getting feedback that's not always consistent and makes our job a little difficult.
Yeah, I think that's true. And I think, you know, when you have a change in staff, that occurs, you know, we worked with one.
And so, I think the task force is to get unified so we can, you know, make our decisions with more information.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, we've had discussions before and I think we've been consistent, at least for our 12 years. But, yeah.
We all can learn.
Well, and there's stuff we're getting for this. I don't mean to drag us on, but downtown areas with heavy tree planting apparently attract shoppers more. It makes sense. It's cool.
Correct.
It's comfortable in the summertime.
Correct.
There's a lot of research about the benefits of doing a good...
Very much so.
And of course, there's the urban heat island and whatever. Okay, so we're going to move on with it.
All those benefits.
And we're going to get all those things done.
Any other public comments?
So, anybody else from the public wish to speak?
Hello. My name is Francia Alvarez. I'm with the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. I just have a couple of comments. First, I appreciate that all this hard work has gone into saving the magnolia tree and saving the red maple. And I appreciate that. I just wanted to mention that a low-impact development, of course, is very important. And it's not just protecting five feet around the base of a tree. It really requires going to the drip line of the tree. And so, I want to be sure that that is in the record, that that will be addressed when you are going to be doing the work at the site. Also, in the last meeting that we had, Mr. Dandrea mentioned that there were some issues still with drainage and that it was in the area of the magnolia. And I'm not sure exactly what those issues were, but I'd like to know that they were taken care of and it's not going to affect the roots of the tree. They were?
I will double check.
Okay. And finally, and, oh, and the other thing is, you were just talking about the strategic plan for the town. And I just want to again mention, and we've talked about this before, that we will need to do a tree canopy assessment of the entire town. And in that way, we'll know where we need to plant. And just as you did the, with the P O C D, you created a plan of where you could build out in the town. In effect, that's what we're doing for trees, where we can plant new trees in that same mode. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we would set the priorities. Once we have the plan, then we'd know where to start. Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay. Any commissioners have any more comments? Nope. Mr. Tessie?
Yeah, just quickly to address the point regarding the drainage line. As Wes had indicated, he and Tony had worked out a plan. Essentially, it's being shifted as far south as possible away. But it's going to be away from the, away from the tree canopy, right? It'll be far enough to the south. So, that'll be adjusted in the final, on the final site plan that's submitted to staff for approval. And you can note that it will be shifted in a way as soon as make the saving of the tree problematic.
You've got that relocation.
And with that, again, essentially reiterating what a number of people have said, that appreciate all the time and effort, a lot more than anybody thought at the beginning here. At the end of the day, I think architecturally and site-wise and also streetscape-wise, we've wound up with a handsome building and one that I think will enhance at the end of the day, the streetscape, but also provide, let's not forget, two more affordable units in our town inventory.
Moderate income.
Moderate income.
I feel like a school teacher.
Under our town of Greenwich.
Yes.
It's okay. You were referring before to a conversation that you and I had, having to do with the preservation and task force. And actually, I think you had that with Tom Hegney, not with me. But, anyway.
I have not had a conversation with that.
Oh, Tom, when you were bringing, no, it was a minor point.
I was telling you to tell you.
Yeah.
I was telling you. I haven't had a conversation with anybody before.
Okay, I didn't want to feel slighted.
No, no, that's a new conversation. We just started talking about the task forces last week. So, we had not told Hegney about it.
All right.
We'll keep him in the dark if that makes you feel better.
No, no.
Okay.
He remembers a lot more than I do.
All right.
But thank you really very much for all your efforts.
So, if nobody else has any comment? We're going to close this application and that ends the public meeting. Mr. Fox? What? Yeah. And Mr. Fox, could I have, we are not going to vote on this application tonight. There's a lot of little bits and pieces that the secretary would like to make sure he has lined up and ready. So, we will vote on it at the next meeting in two weeks, okay? But we'll make it the last, Mr. Tessie, we'll make sure we vote at the very end of the meeting and we'll make it as late as possible.
Makes me feel a lot better, thank you very much.
And I'll try really hard to call you by your name. Could I have a resolution and a motion on the minutes?
I don't have them.
On the minutes.
Minutes, I have them. You want to give them to me?
Why does he just get started?
If they're in my packet, I will vote.
How come he doesn't have the minutes? It says we're supposed to do them and only Nick has them.
I don't have them.
This happens all the time. Poor Andy gets slighted.
I think we'll have to correct this.
So, can you, we need to connect you with Hine.
Microphone.
Yeah, that's fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.